Well, it's.
Read up on anything that said value, American value. So I didn't want to bring it up unless there's some people.
I'm okay.
That was my first question. And that I was hoping that three of us who are not really thinking about the council chamber that you know is speaking in the schedule should be coming early. Try three forty-five or three thirty or something so we can know.
You know, it's like a five minute, it's really intuitive.
Okay. Okay.
I I don't know. I mean, what do you think?
And I'm okay. I just wanted to, is it something we should know?
It really has to say. Now, if we're waiting now five minutes, Sam, if you're listening, Charlie, you're really listening here.
Okay, great. So a couple of minutes just to talk through this that we had to talk about.
No. Just wish I should push the vote for me.
For you?
Yeah.
Okay, so what are you running for?
Everything's for me to. I don't know why.
All right, let's go ahead. Go ahead. I don't care. Um, and then, um. I kind of brought this up with Shelley and um we talked and I just wanted to bring it up right now is the um. On the consent agenda is our treaty move things were pinned by and my concern in there and. It's not a whether we support it or not, but it says in there, here's the two options for putting that for. Running the questions through them come forward. And I just want to make sure that's not our tacit approval of those two options. Because I think we'll get kicked back from the community. So I just want to go. Can we clarify that? Do you think off the consent agenda to say this is not, we're not approving this right now. We're just approving this opportunity if we look forward.
Let's move it to the next agenda. I mean, I go Terry says she has it here tonight, but she has a pretty intensive jury duty as.
No, that's fine. However, we are just wanted to bring it up with the council is that's my concern. It's like, we don't want to say right now we're tacitly approving, you know, option one or two.
And I have the same issue because we have the bike path from an A street. I thought we talked about not doing that at our work session.
That's what I had thought too.
Yeah, so that's I have to say certain that is so. Let's just pick it in next agenda.
Yeah. So we just take off and set. So, okay, that's what my opinion is. And then the last thing was. Uh, if you do consent agenda more of a deeper than I, we're not here at the last meeting. So can we pull off? The uh minutes from that meeting and put it separately.
That's good.
As opposed to keeping it in the consent.
So just two motions. One to approve consent agenda, item A and B, and if you got to just not vote on it. A motion to approve. C, G, everybody can vote. Motion to continue H, everybody.
I have one more question on consent. Um, just wondering on the city hall H back. Is that a? Critical item because I thought we had, I thought I had seen it. I was here to talk about. But don't see on here now, but I thought we got something on here to talk about uh the energy service contracts facilities.
I think yes, we are planning that and yes, it's a critical consideration.
There's give out. But they give me, I know.
I think they're.
They've had issues for years, but I was just wondering, should we be doing that before we, right before we bring in energy service performance contract through want to.
If you want to, I can have another something here.
Right.
I don't know. She's not here. So I.
Okay, okay.
Okay, because.
We're just talking about it now for second night.
I I will know the answers.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, I am that.
Well, that's not.
That year.
So just to pull it off consent for some questions. I'm not saying I I wouldn't approve it. I'd like to know.
Hold it right now. Okay.
Which one's that?
The H V inspection.
The H back for city hall.
Anything else provision too?
Oh, I was like, what? I'm sorry, everyone. I'm just gonna apologize in advance. Moving a little slow.
So right now we're just deciding that A and B separate, D, H. Did you say another one?
Uh, I just said, um, as it stands now, we would have a motion to approve consent agenda items A and B. With only those members who were here at that meeting approving those minutes. Uh, actually, let me back up. Uh, A is the only one you guys all worked there for. The the point that everybody except market was here. So basically.
Well, Carl, we just thought we'll sit a minute and although we're alone without statements, no sessions, if it's at each state.
Yeah, that's anyway, uh, he's mentioned that, yeah, a motion to approve A and B. Uh, then we're gonna have a motion to approve C, E, F, and G. Uh, a motion to continue H and then discussion that D.
Knowing that conspiracy is unable to tend this.
Right.
You see, not getting impure.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I think that's how it's feeling. I just, I see, see why is he there? Why is he able? Uh, he's got to check with his doctor to get confirmation. I said, if you're not feeling good, just don't show up and honestly, you're.
Sorry, when you talk related, Vic, you're talking with Tony and not here for your conversation, so.
Just for everybody else who decided you're popping on also next.
Are we, are we gonna let him appear by Zoom?
No, and so I wanted to bring that up. I think on the next agenda, we could bring our uh remote participation back. I mean, we've talked about it. Uh, we talked about pre-pandemic.
We want to see how this works, as I recall.
We did, yeah. I think. I mean, is it? Can we just bring it back or first, does need two readings?
Uh, we could do a couple of different things. I mean, one of the things that I talked about, I think for the couple of years, for tonight's meeting, there's, you know, if you wanted to open the meetings or write your session and say, we're going to, you know, for this meeting. Test this out and allow council Hershey to zoom in. I think that would be totally appropriate. Uh. We don't have any, you know, land use items. We don't have anything that is particularly uh difficult. To manage in in that hybrid environment. Um, you guys can see how it works and if it doesn't, um, don't worry about it. Um, and then we can certainly bring back more formal policy at the next meeting. I, you know, I think that that's kind of a little grant that gives you guys an opportunity to see if it works. Um, I did ask an additional Zoom link to be created so that we can do a hybrid session. Just, I think it's worthwhile there again. It's a, it's a good test for, so, but it's at council's discretion, obviously.
So the last thing.
And that sounds fine. I I I think it's one of those things that I I just think it's like, you guys need to vote at the beginning of the meeting to allow it because we don't currently have a policy that allows it. That's what I'm saying. That's the, okay, that's the difference. I'm not just saying, oh, you know, throw off wheels for this one. It's like, you guys need to make a decision for this meeting tonight. But you're gonna do it. And that's, I mean, I suggest you tell me if that, that that was one path that you guys could go down.
And what, what juncture in the meeting?
Um, I think you could do it right after we called regular meeting together or add. But.
And we've added to the agenda at this point?
Yeah, I mean, it's an agenda change. Yeah, so at the beginning of the, the regular session at five fifteen.
Yes.
You know, we just like plug it in right before the exact session.
Yeah, we took Mark this year, guy here. Before the pandemic, we talked about this, about allowing remote participation. If we did take the formal vote at that point, not allow it. And I think we've all kind of.
Absolutely.
But it was also pre-accepted.
Exactly.
I mean, we didn't have the technology to really make it.
Yeah.
Work.
Yeah.
May I ask though, why land uses that is a concern?
Well, I just.
Done Zoom for two years.
I know, but they're all in the room or all not in the room.
Yeah. That's what we're saying.
Okay, I've got it. So they are in lies of because you can't on Zoom see the face that. The attorney or the developer is making when you say something. So you have slightly different information than the people on the Zoom do.
Got it.
And so that's because it's really not. I I think we can work through that, but it's just one of those things we need to cognit uh.
And we just talked about that.
Yeah, don't forget.
I'll, I'll see this, right. Ab- absolutely. And that's why I said this may.
Like, it's pretty straight.
It's a test, it's a test, it's a test case for us. Uh, anything else? We did, uh, the other thing we probably possibly need to clean up and I think we got to do at the same game, but. We did say that if a public wants to participate in calls and electronically, we're having this debate about if we go back in person. You know, do we have everybody captive up here in front of us or do we allow people to call in? And at that time, we said if people call in, they either at least appear. It with video feed. I mean, we did take note that. We haven't been worse than that at all. So I guess I'm kind of interested here to post that still are interested in that because if. If we're five people calling it not have your video, um, then we take another vote, a specific vote for that because that was the last vote we took.
Wasn't there a concern on Zoom bombing if we allow the peer by video like to listen to something that that people should be talking about? No, I don't know.
Yeah, I think what it was, so you need to um promote it, they have to be promoted panelists to be able to use the video. I I think it's just one of those things you guys can make a decision tonight or the next meeting.
Not, not that it matters. I went to a current day meeting and it was not mid-year. It was just, oh, no, they allowed both. And I understand that facial expression is important, but.
And I was kind of, so anyway, you guys can make a decision. It's a lot. I appreciate it.
I think, yeah, one of the reasons to do that to you were, we were trying to create some stronger parameters for participants. Is so that we don't unintentionally put people from energy prerecorded messages and people from how to, you know, the area that you. So I I I still was inclined, hopefully, to stay with parameters where you have to show your face or sound directly.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Give name and address.
Yeah, absolutely.
Maybe we're talking tonight briefly about uh council versions, outlining council's participation. Maybe we just affirm that. And let the public know, if somebody's calling tonight, it's unable to, because that's not better practice for the better part of a year. I'm inclined to let people call in with, if they don't have the availability of a camera then buying for this meeting, but just let the public know that in the future.
Yes, ma'am.
My, but in a, just a piece of information for you to have. In order to share their video, they have to be made a panelist, which means that they can share their screen and could potentially.
So you'll just have to give be a very good quick tutorial on the button to cut the feed. Like, I, I mean, as long as it's not like they can write me and affect us with malware in my panelist. Like, that's, no. If I push a button, it just cut off.
I'll make sure.
Is it committed to panels? Do we have?
Yeah, as even as.
Yeah. That is how that is happening.
And it's time, when it's going on.
We don't do that.
Well, we can also ask somebody before they get promoted to panelist to identify themselves and if they're a citizen and.
It was at a DDA meeting right after COVID started. So, um, it just was off.
Yeah.
It'd be worse here. There's more with all the people, so we don't want that to happen.
Uh, maybe what it is, let's. Let's talk about on the technical end before we make a decision tonight.
Is it, is it software we can use? Does it have these things? So it'd be more secure of it?
Not that I, not that I do want.
Really?
Other words, it's smoothly, I've got a bunch of different platforms. It's the same set of issues.
And that everybody at this point has downloaded on their computers and so that participation is pretty.
Right. I'm just thinking that if it's a special piece of software and you really want to talk, then you will then download.
Well, and there's.
Better. Uh, yeah, let's, let's talk about this evening. Uh, anything else for future agendas? Or to see any of the candidates.
So Jonathan, I talked to Mark yesterday about council comments. Can I just give a quick rundown of what we do here? We talk about agenda reviews, we have to see if we're doing them.
Yeah, uh, so agenda review is like in the morning session. Uh, well, we have a morning session that we kind of talk about with some agenda tonight. If there's any questions, if there's like this, like it's exactly what we experienced here. Or if there's things that I think, you know, we've been hearing where we want to have a brief conversation, like, boy, this would be great. There's some timeliness to having this on the next agenda or agenda of the next month. Um, that kind of helps staff prioritize like, oh, this is something like remote participation. You know, I forgot that we were gonna test it out and. Before we make a final decision. And so these, this, I think this conversation is very indicative of, you know, fifteen or twenty minutes that we typically have. Anything else that we do here? I guess journey to changes or reviews.
Summer, I think it was very helpful for me to have the recording to these sessions, um, the work session. Uh, and um. I can't remember who's that, just the specific thing that we did those recordings in summer. We always record it and how quickly will we go there. Alyssa will be available, available on Tuesday, for the Tuesday of August.
I think we've all talked about wanting to get these recorded, like audio.
Yeah.
Alyssa, are these works, is this work session recorded right now?
Yes.
And will future work sessions be recorded?
Not unless you guys direct us to. The idea I have, the issue I have with recording them is they're more formal and that sometimes. You guys come back and like, well, that's, you try to get direction from the work session and there's no direction in the work session. But I mean, if you guys want us to.
I mean.
Certainly can, but understand I will change my opinion on don't get this direction in the work session because it's not legal.
I think that's okay. It's just that idea of what it say is really, I mean, I jot this all the time, but sometimes you. Just want to hear what was said for clarity.
I I think it's more, yeah, the clarity piece is, I mean, I think this is probably why never always asked us to take votes because we'll say something in here. And I, I am as guilty, probably more guilty is, oh, I remembered it this way and I know we took a vote and then all of a sudden I'm going through. Need to try to figure out where this vote happened and it was an all hands comment that I must send a work session, so. I, I think no decision, like we know, no decisions ever get made and I think having it recorded just is a record for us to go back on. I I don't. Have a problem. I don't know. What do you guys think?
I think we added to the agenda. That's dialogue we had in the agenda.
Have a conversation with that.
And I did one thing notebook before we move on. Alyssa, in the event that we do decide we want to record them, how quickly are they available?
Um, that depends on what you're asking. So I would ask that you guys have the conversation, do you want them broadcast to Zoom? Every time and like have that be what we do? Or are they just being recorded? Because we can do it either way. They don't have to be on Zoom for us to record them. Um.
Recorded the, the, yeah, YouTube.
No, they won't be anywhere except for in our local storage that we can share with you guys.
We could.
Yeah.
Similar to how the interviews, I think the interviews are a week that you can, from your director sharepoint that you sent to me so that I could watch.
And. Sorry, I know it's going to get a bit for direction. Not direction.
Conversation.
Conversation. If if Carl, if you wanted to maybe talk about a policy anyway, policy about uh exact session records will be retained from yada yada.
Right, we, uh, I, you know, I have to take the record attention policy.
Yeah.
Ninety on, I know it's on exact session, it's ninety, but uh if we wanted to do something somewhere, uh, it's a lot of content that's going to certainly have space.
Right, now that's my point.
So I, let's, uh, we can talk internally and when you guys have that conversation at the next meeting, we'll have some information about kind of what that looks like, what our recommendations are. I would suggest not keeping them over, you know, nine year, hundred to twenty days. Just because, you know.
Work sessions.
Yeah, work sessions because you just wind up with like a lot of stuff. And it's not the official action of the council, unlike the meetings where you are taking votes and we do hang on to it. May I feel negative some of the stuff that we ever have questions about or like what was at that last meeting or two work sessions ago, like I don't want to go back.
And I'll say that recording helped me just kind of understand that kind of work one a little bit. Got to listen to you guys and you got to read it and then I saw it again.
Yeah.
Council, but that was a tough one to put my head around. And so.
Right.
Just having that, not just the interviews, but helping that keep the focus. Oh, yeah. Now that Shelley has that question, I get, you know.
So on to next agenda, we will have a policy review on remote participation for us. Recording work sessions and.
Public participation.
Public participation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well. That shows up. About me. You're gonna hang right there. So the tape.
I hadn't really thought about water conversations, but just conversation, all of it, that would have been a great idea. Let's see what through here. I'm not quoting. These are right water. Guys ready?
We're ready.
So we're really concise as much as you really possible on this report. Uh, there are many, many, many water reports available for the city of Atlanta Spring. We kind of focused a little bit on nineteen eighty-five spring water engineering report. Nineteen eighty-seven right water engineering report. And there's a lot of reports between that or two thousand and twenty-one master planning report. The next June just finished up for us last year. But a lot of the reports are little tiny pieces of the system and basically the master. A lot of the reports are little tiny pieces of the system and basically the master plan report them all together, verified them through flow analysis and a few other things. So and the other reason we're having this conversation obviously is water. We know that there's concern about how much water the city of Glendale Springs has, the conversations that are going on. Want to go through the water rights or the water comes from basically how much we have, how much we use, how much we used to use, those kinds of fun things. So if you're okay, I was just gonna kind of, I'm not very informed by any means, but I want to kind of go through it step by step. The nineteen eighty-five report from Wright Water is water resource options for the city of Glendale Springs, that's exactly what it sounds like. They went through a lot of what with all the water resource options the city of Glendale Springs has, either water rights, basically through water rights that we have in the city. And it came down to basically can no name Grizzly Creek waters by the system of sole source availability. When we start getting the numbers, you'll understand why that question was there. Can a second water supply be developed economically to backup no name Grizzly? In essence, we've already kind of done that, we're kind of finalizing that this year with five hundred acre feet of Brudie. Can that be called on the compound? In essence, we've called it, yes. But in essence, we have five hundred acre feet that we can pull out of Roaring Fork River and pump up to the water plant. When we finish our water planning project this year, we'll be able to go make all that water with Grizzly no name water. Can a second supply be a bit issue for current supply? And I believe they're basically talking about kind of springtime issues, in spring there is higher humidity coming out of the Grizzly Creek as a runoff. And that's kind of focusing towards groundwater conversation, groundwater generally speaking, cleaner water with less humidity. So you'll see those groundwater options that are going through this whole report, if you guys want these reports, I can send them to.
Can I just ask you a quick question about your venue, because. My recollection is well so like turbidity at Roaring Fork same time, is it lower such as tree, is that the concept of the end of it?
So I think the well systems in essence, if you can get a lot of water, in most cases, the water will be a better quality water. Now, it may not come in turbidity, but it may come with heavy metals and other.
I'm not talking about the well, I'm talking about our current, we just take that, we just have a big pipe in the river, we take it out of there, it's over here at A Street.
It's a large pump intake, it's basically a big window in the river, we just pull water into it, a big wet well, there's two pumps, we cover it.
And my question was, what's turbidity of that water in the spring?
It, it can vary.
Okay, is it better or worse than no name?
Which depended what year it is, how many fires are up on it, if it's melting that marble, if it's melting the lake steam. You know, it really varies day to day, if you look at the USGS turbidity meters, they have them.
Okay.
You know, they go up and down, but is the Roaring Fork water not as good as Grizzly no name even in springtime?
Yes, yeah.
Generally speaking, yes, a hundred percent.
Thank you.
So at least for meters, we have the information that we have, yes, the no really water is the water that we would want to use as long as we possibly can use it. Which is why I did this report, kind of looking for something. Will the city's water quality be ultimately adding second water source water? Yes. Now, but it could be turbidity, maybe heavy metals, maybe taste, like we go to the Roaring Fork, we get calls on taste, it's different waters treated different ways. And we basically, you can make water all taste the same, it's just another thing to add to the planes that we really don't want to do, we don't have to. What are the advantages, benefits, problem, cost, the problem, reservoir, that was a big conversation at this report is, doesn't make sense to even look at this reservoir, we have rights to it from nineteen sixty. I can throw that apple if you would like to, and that's something we'll talk about during this also. The more interesting thing to me in these reports is water usage at the time of the eighties and population growth expectations for the city of Glendale Springs. So basically nineteen eighty-five report says that, you know, by nineteen ninety-seven, because that's kind of what they're, sorry, nineteen eighty-seven report, they're basically looking at ten year projections, what is the population of the city of Glendale Springs in nineteen ninety-seven? And the population projection is eighteen thousand five hundred, so that was twenty-two years ago. We have, we reached ten thousand at this point, the city of Glendale Springs. It was a little ambiguous whether the fifty-five hundred overnight tourists were in the eighteen thousand five hundred or was on top of that. Either way, you're looking at thirteen thousand population or eighteen thousand five hundred, we have, we got close to those two populations. And we're twenty-two or twenty-four years past, twenty-five years past that at this point. So, you know, it's very interesting that they're that, these two population predictions report estimate ten point seven MG. It's not an unreasonable projection of water usage they had back in the day. Second report that they're actually referencing from nineteen eighty-one was projecting reading twelve to fifteen MG. Early in the city of Glendale Springs, on a high day, we use four point seven, one day we told people not to use water. And they actually peaked out highest day we've seen in five years, that was during the fire hit, don't use water, Mark, or to go to, you know, go outdoor. And they peaked out and they say four point seven million gallons, and that's pretty high for us in the normal day. And if you start going into here, you'll see why they were making these projections nineteen eighty, eighty-one, they are basically saying six point one, six point six million gallons today, it's kind of normal number in summer. The peaks of nineteen eighty, the peak in nineteen eighty-one was eight million and nine point one, basically double what we use right now. But you also have to consider these timeframes in eighteen eighty-one, I think it was thirty percent or more of the city did not have a water gate. A lot of the city was on a flat rate and there were a lot of type issues associated with it, they're projecting those a million gallons today, adjusted infiltration loss, type leak. That's a big leak, you know, we had a leak earlier this year that we were right on topic, it's even close to that. But they're just kind of saying, on average, we lose a million gallons a day just in soil. Which is probably true back then. Yeah, yeah, County Eagle had that problem a couple of years ago, they fixed a lot of pipes, but you'll know it for trade, it's the river, it's a river, but you can see that. No meters, flat rates, infiltration, basically people just use water however they want to. There was a story that there was one automotive shop that they like flushing out their floor drain, so they let the hose run twenty-four hours a day, seven days. They just continuously left it off. So obviously you've got more efficient with water usage, even with the irrigation that we have right now. We've gotten better at keeping track of it, so you raise rates, people pay for water, they don't have a tendency to turn it on and let it run. So where we're going with water usage, as you can see, is way better than anybody ever projected that in the eighties, where we would be in the early, late nineties, early two thousands for water usage. So I think we're doing good. And just for reference, nine points or fifteen MG by nineteen ninety-seven, twenty-three point two CFS. And that's an important number because our water rates on a no name Grizzly is twenty. That's why they're kind of looking at supports, if we exceeded our water rates in no name Grizzly, we weren't, we're going to get more water drawn. Instead of looking at the problem, they were just looking to get you more water, in my opinion, at that point. In our Grizzly, twenty CFS, you have references twelve point nine three million gallons per day or NG. So it's a lot of water, we use four seven for a high day, twelve point nine three is what we're allowed. You could say global warming has reduced that percentage a little bit, maybe our rights or the ability to pull that, but in essence, we are a lot full of points. Just no name Grizzly, we actually have a pretty thorough water rights portfolio in the city of Glendale Springs. Existing water supply data, just for reference, in nineteen seventy-six, the city did put a USGS meter engage up at the outfall for where of Grizzly Creek reservoir go. Basically, there's a road, there's a culvert, they put a meter there, they kept track of it for twenty years, so we have good flow data within that basin up there. And currently water rate reservoir water, yeah, reservoirs designed to store three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine acre feet. So I can throw that map up so you guys can look at it. But just for reference, a three thousand eight hundred seventy-nine acre feet of water storage, so one foot deep covered in entire acres, what an acre foot is. For the city utilized two thousand three hundred ninety-four acre feet of water in twenty twenty-one, which is actually a high, pretty high year for us of eight twenty-one. So that is fifteen hundred acre feet less water than we're allowed to with that current water storage right that's up there.
You've jumped that four meter, is that still going?
So if you take it down to nineteen ninety-six. It does cost money to keep it up there.
I was curious since the last few years it's left, let's know when it's dropped off.
Well, and that's part of the consideration for us at this point that Mike and I are looking at is, we're kind of reviewing everything at this point, because it makes sense to put that meter back up there. It costs twenty thousand dollars a year. Those twenty thousand dollars to install it and eighteen thousand dollars a year to maintain it for the USGS. So I'll make sure you. Twenty thousand, put it up every year in eighteen, so it's twenty thousand dollars to put it up, first you get it there, you do the readings, and then every year they're actually going, oh, and I'm off it, it's eighteen thousand dollars.
I'm, so the USGS, are those old numbers or are those current?
Those are from Stephen, that's like two months.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, this is Mike.
Yes.
Mike's side.
Sorry, this is Mike, my Germanic English, my wife.
Oh, yeah, so I have a couple of reps from the group, yeah.
All right, and that's what we do with this right water. I apologize, sorry, I didn't drag the goal company once I come here, while you're looking at the new PS, I mean, maybe swag on what the rest of our costs. So that's not really our number one option. So let's, we'll talk about it.
And I'm just asking.
Because we're talking about eighteen thousand dollars a year to find out if water flows, does that represent, you know, water is the cost or what? How does that relate to?
I knew you'd come to the table eventually.
Well, the thing about it, what, it's a, it's awesome to be considering place right now, I mean, what's the time zone we are, if we can find the information from nothing to a station. It's not in the place that you got to know.
So this is the perfect place for this water right, which is the storage right, basically, because it is at the existing outfall of the right. If you fly up there and this is actually a pretty interesting location, or there's not much vegetation, USGS, US Forest Service has that defense map there. It's an interesting spot, let's just say. Let me say interesting, that would make it interesting. Then at this point, other than maybe some fault lines, we haven't come up with any fatal flaws, other than it's in the Forest Service. And they don't want it, or not that they don't want it, it's just a very long process for them. You see that?
Yeah.
So this is the existing nineteen sixties map for the Grizzly Creek reservoir. Basically north in this direction, the outfall.
Up here?
Yeah. Yep, so right here is the outfall, so basically you have one, two, three, four, so fingers coming into this, this, that's like, these are basically marshes, there is some weapons potentially up there, so we're very nervous. But in essence, you can move those to the outside of the reservoir itself to reestablish weapons of rip rary areas where they don't exist on the outside of it. But, you know, we'll get to this conversation where we're at, where we're going with it a little bit. Amy, you want to interject off? So that is math. So if I take that down?
Yeah.
I have most. So the wet water report does what you Grizzly Creek, it notes the basin produces eight dot eight hundred fifty acre feet of an average snow year and four dot one hundred ninety acre feet of dry year. Both of those are significantly more than the storage right and the usage up there. If you take all the data flow from the USGS mapping from nineteen seventy-six to nineteen ninety-six, you can average the monthly flows, you kind of spread it across there in essence. On an average year, that basin that produced nine thousand three hundred sixty-two acre feet of water, or two and a half times four than we would actually need. So, you know, there's, there's a bit significant amount of water, but that's that reservoir for that base up there, and that's really high of a base that there's. And it's a really big base up there, so it's our better water producer than no name, I don't know if you guys noticed, but the no name basin is around twelve thousand acre. And Grizzly's around twenty-four thousand acres, so it's double the size. So at the end of the year, when no name starts to run a little bit lower, and we double it, kill all the fish for, you know, no name. We go over to Grizzly and turn it on and transfer water over, and we try to balance out the aquatic life of the water usage between the creeks and what our water rights are. So basically, you know, that's how we play it at this moment, but no name does start to run a little dry towards the July, August, September.
Man, if you're going to get there, the question I can't, when I went through this, is long term, they have lower snowfalls, or is that creating the need to do that storage?
We'll get there, yeah. So what I just brought, and the, in the report is, it gets you your water, peak water days in the last three years. And every year you do climb a little bit, which is why I just look at the last five years or so, because we hit a big peak and then we started to meter and it started coming down, and we're kind of going the other direction slightly. Over the last five years or so. But people are in age twenty nineteen for four point zero zero six MG peak, that was the highest date in twenty nineteen. People are in age twenty twenty, it's four point seven we talked about, people are in age twenty twenty-one, it's four point three eight one MG. Third, we're discussing pros and cons, and we can kind of talk about those when we get them a bit further down, but obviously there's weapons, fence, water rights, US Forest Service, environmental aspects. So people really want it up there, for people to have cabins directly adjacent to this. You know, we're all going to have an opinion on whether a reservoir is a good idea or not, which is why it's kind of maybe the last thing we're looking at and pushing on it, because. It'll be the most difficult, we could have a bigger station, say we want to do reservoir, it could be ten plus years before we can even get a permit potentially, if, if we get a permit for a minute. So I think Scott, it's going to wrap this topic. That you have which on first stage, but we'll see how it goes. All the water sources that we're looking at within the reports. Obviously the color of the river, the Roaring Fork River with higher organics, the color of the river, no color of the river, you can see it physically, it is a dirtier river for us, so they kind of just avoid that. The Roaring Fork River, obviously, we have water rights to the river, we have water rights to come to the river up above us, we can transfer water rights, we can do all kinds of fun things. But you don't want to change water rights, we don't have to, because we'll lose them if you change points of perversion, we'll have to redo them, they go down to quantity and quality and all kinds of fun things. It's hard to explain it for, for Carl to come to share it clearly, but we don't really want to do that. But the Roaring Fork River is the perfect place because we did buy Brudie ranch, we can pump out of there, we pump five MG a day. So we can pump more water out of the Roaring Fork River right now legally. Than we do on a peak day, so we have two good water sources at this point.
So Brudie is five MG a day, or what's?
Brudie is five hundred acre feet, we have a volume associated with it, five thirty, five of media is around what, thirty-two or thirty-three days of pumping continuously. When we did the fire, initially we started by just transferring water, it's down in Boston Miller, we turn Brudie up a little bit, we pull it out. And then after that, Carl started doing more of the version changes.
Yeah, so what, what we've done, sort of, we'll probably set more again this year through the state engineer is, is essentially a temporary, an administrative, temporary administrative change with the state engineer. To shut, so that we can take, effectively, we take our Grizzly Creek rights out that eighth street, so that we don't dip, have to dip into the aug plan. And the five acre feet, you know, Matt and I have always viewed that as like the, the kind of boat length water that's available to us. So, so we can do that, I think, and you have some of the conversations that I'll be having as we get into this. It's really, right now, volume is typically not the issue that we're running into either one of these water rights. You know, turbidity, other, other factors are the bigger impacts that we're, we're seeing out of them, so we're set up really well. I am, as municipal wire engineers fairly loads to go in and do an actual change case to, you know, to do the great alternative point of perversion for Grizzly Creek at eighth street. Even though it could make total sense, just because I, I don't expect those, those really good pre-combat rights to any kind of water proceeding where we might lose any of them for any reason. And I'm going to take care of that, so I'm just not, not willing to do that.
The device finds it really great about it.
Yeah.
That, all we do is basically fill out paperwork, we pump for this long, we turn both pumps on, or one pump on, we keep track of that. And then just make sure that basically that was, was built a little bit Grizzly no name, and we keep those records on, so.
Yeah.
Paperwork trail, but it's pretty easy to do and that we can be provided for acre feet in Brudie. And they can kind of release it, store it, keep it full, or release it for aquatics, you know, trying to keep it and using it for sufficient use as possible versus our, our drinking water, if that will. So, but this is also why we're putting the second twenty-four inch pipe in. I know it's come up in the paper a few different times, why are we doing this, we're going to blend water sources, Roaring Fork's not as good as no name. But no offense, but with no name Grizzly can't supply us water, the Roaring Fork is a very good second option to be able to supply the city with water. So if no name's a three million gallons a day, we need four, you know, fine, we'll pull a million gallons out of Roaring Fork. And we'll treat it just like we do with everything else, and it will come out tasting most likely, most in like no name water to us at that point, so.
The concept of historical usage, is it beneficial for us to occasionally use those Roaring Fork rates? Just so that we continue to have a rate of continuity?
Yeah, and we do have net operationally, we cycle twice a month.
Just so we can show this.
Once a month we cycle, so we do, we do exercise on a, on a.
It's storage, right, really not a water.
Well, now, I mean, I think there were two questions there, one was the storage rack in Brudie, which is fine, the other one is, are we using on a regular basis, certain rack, float racks on Roaring Fork? So yes, could we, inside the pumps, at least once a month? You know, over the last couple of years, we've probably been using it more than that, just as we've done work out.
But they're not conditional, so we don't.
No, they're not conditional, but there's still a requirement that you, you know, you continue to use those rights.
I mean, Rudy, is it reduced since its, its volume itself, how does that impact our rights? Like, do we become more vulnerable, who, who has more precedent? Like, the city of Aspen uses it for electricity, correct? So like, where, how does that?
Yeah, um.
I'll explain that one.
Good one. Uh, fairly, um, you know, fairly complicated, um, answer, the short answer is, is that. You know, in any normal water year, we would expect that we always have that five hundred acre feet available to us. I think what, um, you know, Tom or any of the other, you know, water folks in the room can say is that. Uh, that, there is a level of uncertainty that we're feeling now with the intensification of the drought cycles. Uh, because ultimately, we may not get a decision on it, on those releases. Uh, and part of that is because we may, you know, we are going to see a contact call probably sometime within the next, uh, you know, two to five years, uh, you know, state contact call. We're still trying to sort through what that looks like for all of these various storage rights. So I know that was a great non-answer, um, in, in, in that it's, um. It's rolling fluid right now, no pun intended, sorry, that was bad too. Uh, so anyway, but like I said, on most, on most years, we would expect that we have that five hundred acre feet available to us. And really, you know, I think Matt and I, prior to, with Rob, we always use that as the absolute, you know, thing that we have. Uh. You know, the, the likelihood of us completely losing, uh, any flows in Grizzly. Uh, are fairly low, but what we have experienced is we just can't access it, right? Uh, so, you know. We can operate the exchange, or for some reason that isn't available, or isn't available at a high enough level, that's when Rudy water becomes really important. So I think, uh, an extraordinarily dry year, uh, and, you know, a rock takes out the twenty four inch line coming down from Grizzly. That's when, that's really what that five acre feet is, is, you know, targeted at. Uh, and recognizing the five acre feet is only thirty two days. So.
Add five now, or five minutes.
And, and, and we, as a, we just, obviously, we mandate that and, and all those things, but just to put it in, you know, just to have regular usage, have water, you should put it into that.
Yeah, a rock came down, took out the, one of the pipes, took out the tank, took out part of the system, you know, we'd be like, hey, let's. Cut back for a few days till we get this thing fixed, a few days, and we'll know what that is, you know, and be able to go to that one point five or so M G P that we use in the winter time, which I just like, lower than that, you're gonna get ninety days, you know, almost, most of the summer.
Although based on what they did last summer, when we had the drought, when we told them not to use it, maybe we should tell them to use water.
Yeah. You know, and, and that is, I mean, it's, it's an interesting psychological thing, that we have, uh, historically tried to avoid actually imposing water restrictions. Because people tend to go, well, I'm odd days, I'm gonna watch, well, straight out, it's because by now it's my day to water. And so, uh, uh, you know, that was, uh, we, we've consistently seen a spike in usage. Uh, with mandatory restrictions, which is why education piece is so critical, to try and get everybody on the same page, but it's just human nature, you know?
I love my sidewalk to the ground.
I did, got a little confused.
What, in the last, I guess, ten years, what have we been able to, I mean, what's the lowest amount of, of load we've gotten out of Grizzly Creek? I mean, I guess my question is, have we ever experienced where I'm like, oh, we have to take from the roaring port? Because, I mean, we've had some exceptionally dry years in the past.
Yep.
Have we ever not been able to meet our highest watering needs? Out of our existing water supplies?
So twenty eighteen, yeah, twenty eighteen, we came close to have the water restrictions on, but then it started raining. So I think we were a week or two, and we put water restrictions on, basically. So that was a really low snow year, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, snow year was really low, it didn't rain a much that year. So yeah, we were pretty close to putting water restrictions on, or we could have just drained most of the creeks. You know, so that's kind of our other option, which is not really an option in our view, want to share water with people like that lives there. And the people that live down in No Name, because when we dry it out, you get bolted very quickly. Um, it has happened before, fortunately, actually. Don't get your water.
Yeah, so to take that, we walk around the wells, the bottom, the second known was recharged, they're no longer using the surface rights, and surface plants up there.
Yeah.
That are aware.
So there's an object, and that whole system still functions and is in place. Um, but actually, I just got the paperwork two days ago, we have water information, well, information for a lot of our, um, No Name and Grizzly Creek, but it's all handwritten. So we're gonna be putting that into an Excel format, so we have some information, especially in the vision file, uh, to kind of keep track of where our flows are. Both dams have meters on them, basically, they're just meters, but, um, they're good enough at this point for what we do. So I'll have a lot of that data here, this year, uh, compiled, so we could all have a conversation about that right instead.
Is that, or not?
What's that?
We know, we tried it.
We electronic recollectance coming through our intake, but not what's going on for a day. So we have two different things that are going on, we put water into the intake, it goes to the No Name tunnels, when we don't, when we close the gate down, we don't need so much backflow for the overflow with the No Name tunnel. And then there's something that goes over the dam itself, there's three different points, perversion, all those, that are a little hard to keep track of, but we're gonna get better at that coming up here soon. So, um, cause those questions are gonna come up here in the future, when water becomes, does it more and more scarce? What are you doing with it, where's it going, what's it overflowing, those kinds of things, so we'll work on those.
Now, next question, there, we have water rights, No Name, Grizzly, and Rudy, do we have water rights off the roaring port of the fort?
Don't give me fork rights, but everything, I mean, into the four, three.
Yeah, wow, yes, wow, right.
We have huge, do, do, do.
Yeah, we have huge, uh, all of that, huge transfers every now and then comes down free. Uh, so that's tributary water in the end of the fort.
Okay.
Other than that, one main.
Can you buy me recently, the council, give some of those, right, water rights off the queues to?
We, um, we released some water rights on queues to, uh. Uh, Mr. Beckley's entities to, uh, they're trying to do a proof concept, I think, more than anything on, on his curigation. So, there are, you know, a lot of those where I, we have historically, um. You know, try to society, you know, do a little bit screaming here or there, to try to, you know, get water rates in use and keep them in use, uh, on those non-main rights that we use on a day, on, you know, on most day places.
Okay, thanks.
So kind of moving on to that conversation, we want to move to kind of also groundwater resources, because we've looked at above ground sources at this point, we're talking groundwater systems still. How can we get that south end up and running? You know, as developments come into West Glenwood, can we use our Reynolds and Kane's water rights, that dish runs most of West Glenwood? It's a very reliable water source, can we pull off of that and create for all our systems out there? Other conversations with other water districts are out there at these points, that potentially could help with irrigation rights and a few other things. So the more, as you can see, if we're only using one point five million gallons a day for internal use, which is what we use. That goes a lot farther than full. You know, so if we can start pulling some of that differential, that delta, which is irrigation water off of the system, then the better off we are for water that we actually need. I love my yard, do I need my yard? Probably, uh, my kids don't use it anymore, but, um. You know, there's that huge differential between the summer and the, the winter time use, it would be nice to get closer to the winter time uses consistently. And the summertime uses are supplied by something else out there, and there are lots and lots of options for that. They're all expensive, they're all adding pipe, adding infrastructure, pumping systems, and water retail, so anyhow. And if you look at, and I'll throw this up, I know this is no, but. But it's an interesting map. Tom is probably quite familiar with this, just like his.
Why bring that up, just from a technology standpoint, if somebody's watching this on Zoom, are they seeing a massive City of Glenwood Springs and us in the corner?
Uh, I, I'm, I'm looking at it on Zoom right now, and you're a quarter, we're a quarter of the screen.
And what's the rest of the screen?
It is me, City of Glenwood, and add.
Okay, so they can choose on their.
Yeah, okay.
Just like you can.
This is recorded, it is, we'll see that for.
Uh, no, actually, it's, um, typically it's Zoom, and when you record, records whatever it uses, the thing that is talking.
So, it'll be like, when the screen shows up, that is the thing that is talking. So, you know, they should be able to see this, and we've been recording, this is the map of the nineteen eighty seven wastewater, uh, review. They started to heat it well, a whole portion of the project was, can we get wells in here? You know, can you get enough flow out of those wells, can you make it cost effective to put wells in? And this is a map of twenty six, I believe, the existing, uh, I mean, well, actually built wells that were in South Glenwood. So the top of the map is Mount, is Silver Stride, I'm gonna give you a, not Mount Silver Stride, but Silver's Avenue, kind of like conversation. Um, then we go all the way down to the Jammeron Ranch, basically, uh, where the school is, uh, in, not South Glenwood, in purple county. All twenty six of these wells, they actually went out and reviewed the well maps, they reviewed the water quality out of the wells as best they could. Um, they reviewed and interviewed people who utilized the wells, um, and basically all of these wells had solidity in them, uh, which means that they have salt, we'll call it base. So this is the same problem that we had when we turned the, uh, Park East system on, and pulled solidity and filled all the grass. So you can see, probably not the greatest area to pull groundwater from if you want to use it for irrigation. Unless you want to kill our trees grass, and then that won't really work. I think the Holy Cross Electric Well is the most interesting one, they still use that well, uh, for washing trucks. And my wife works out there, and she used it, she's like, this is spectacular, it washed the car, and she drove away with a red car with white marks covering the entire thing. Because they have domestic water off City of Glen Springs, was brought all the way down there, and to a ranch, what goes, and the trailer park is down there. They brought sewer water over to the point, they use our water, domestic, but the well will still be utilized for certain things, and it has a lot of salt in it, basically, even at this point. And I don't want to get too in-depth, you guys can, I could send you all your reports, you can read them. But they get quite in-depth on who they talk to, uh, the water, they hold problems, those kinds of things, I'm gonna share this next one here in a sec. So this map, this is a nineteen eighty five report. And basically, what this is showing is that, if you get into the geology of it all, the later that we can pull water from is pretty narrow in places. And City of Glenwood Springs had a lot of hot water, you haven't noticed that? Uh, they did test well in Seventh Street, um, had water in it, the City of Glenwood Springs actually dug that well. Uh, it had hot water in it, but what this map is basically showing is kind of where the aluminum that we could pull water from exists. But the problem with that aluminum is it's so shallow, and it collects all of that same water, that. Anyplace we would want to put a well that is convenient to a large pump station that exists already. Basically, it's most likely gonna return hot water, or water with salt in it, or some unusable water. Which we could pump to the station, and then pump up to the plant, but then there's an entire other process of trying to remove that, so then it becomes usable water.
What, sorry, why does heat matter? Why is hot?
It's just hot water comes with, it pulls all those minerals out of the ground, which is why the hot springs smell of the way.
That's not that it's the temperature is bad.
No, it's just, yes, everything, it's just the water itself. And in one of the reports, it suggested that we put a million gallon tank down by the Lycrosse, basically, kind of Red Canyon Road area. They drilled wells, they tested those wells, returned on those wells, they're pretty good. Um, they were better when the Glenwood ditch was on, because it was recharging that very narrow shallow aquifer, and they were just running more, if I'm correct on that. Um, but it also had solidity within it, and they were saying, take it, put it in a million gallon tank, and then mix it with the water that we already have, and you'll blend out, uh, some of that taste. I don't think that's a good solution to the problem, it's a nineteen eighty seven solution to the problem. Um, we could pull it out, we could potentially put in an R O system, pull the solidity out of it, add it to the water we currently have. So it's just another filter filtration treatment process, that I'm not sure we want to spend money on. But what we're looking at right now is, there's a difference between a hundred and forty five foot well and a shallow well. Horizontal shallow wells, or vertically shallow wells, you can go horizontally within a riverbed, aquifer, basically. You can keep the well under fifty feet deep, and still consider it surface, right? So what we're basically running through right now is we're running through, hey, here's what's been done in the past with wells. Here's what all the options are nowadays with technology. Can we make any well work within the City of Glenwood Springs that's in some decent proximity to the pump station? The wells can work, I don't want to pump them four vertical feet, I want to get them to the two, the belts, basically the belts to our pump station, the two pump station. Put it in that well, and then pump it up the hill, system that we already own and operate, and we can turn up and down, because it now has a very dry, so. So, that's what we have consultant working at this point, basically taking all the old information, all the new information we have, doing for testing. To just kind of put the well conversations either then, or no, this actually isn't viable option, we're not asking for that much water, we're not saying we need to supply the type city. It's four point two billion or whatever gallons of water, we're saying, hey, can we get a million? Can we get a million and a half? Let's just say that it rains for three days, like, steam comes down, barbell comes down, and these two then shut down, or what is the next option available to us, living with what's in our tanks? To try to ride out a big storm, no pun intended. Can we get a well system that can get us a million or a million and a half gallons, we can keep domestic internal use going, um, through a really bad event?
How, how receptive is like the Department of Water Research to us as we can handle internal wells? And how does that compete upon the rights of other surrounding wells? I mean, obviously, you just put quite a few up.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be, um, ask the department to go through an analysis of, uh, you know, impact to other water users, both service and, and subsequent users. So we could do that, and then, uh, you know, the engineers, Divisional Engineers Office, in accordance with such conditions. As they view as appropriate to ensure there's no jury to see your water rates, uh, or regime early on the river. The locations we're, you know, potentially looking at on the fort, we're getting this, there's not a lot, uh, there's not a lot going on in that section. It's fairly low down, river fair close to Colorado. So, from that standpoint, I don't anticipate we'd have any really major impacts. Really, it's kind of really different than what we do with the Eighth Street or Park, or whatever we call it, the pump station over there. Uh, that we do currently, uh, my, you know, my, uh, attorney engineer, he goes, it's that most of the impacts are probably gonna be. Uh, or, or, you, you know, the, the impacts would be a surface loss, because we're gonna be that close to the river, that's related to the extent, so it's gonna be very similar to the pump station. In terms of what they expect out of us to, to, um, to make sure there's no injury.
And, and how receptive are the issuing permits with, really, from what you're telling me, is our surface rates are sufficient right now, so why?
Yeah, that's actually not, you know, whether it's crazy here or not, it's not one of the, um, really crazy areas, so.
I, yeah.
I, I mean, I, I, I say that a little tough, but that, that's, um, the reality is, is that you can apply, I mean. They, they don't evaluate whether it's a good idea, a bad idea, whether you need it or not, it would be a conditional rank, you'd have to prove out that we actually used it, and put it to benefits of use, just like, you know, the water right, so.
In that well map, they show you, you can see that the end of the stream was basically from here down. So not a ton of wells, but this particular location, other than what we drilled, which is a whole longer use, it's gap kind of thing. Um, and if you can think about geology, a river is not just what you see, it's in the banks also, it's continuously flowing. So, I would make an argument with the, I would say, no, that we're really using the same exchange water as we were if we're just pumping out of the pump station. We're just picking it up underground a little bit, just wants a little bit cleaner forward on us. Now, that's a, who knows where this conversation is gonna go, you have to have these conversations, just like the reservoir, you could prove that it's good. But you know, there's also a need state, statement associated with it, why do you need it? You have to prove that there's actually need, an un, un, a critical need for you to store water there. So there's a lot of little pieces and parts that are water, water rights, paperwork, engineering, you have to put them all together and decide. Do any of these actually work, or any of them actually feasible, who's going to say no, that has the authority to say no, you're not, you're not gonna go any farther than that. So, I think it's really interesting to continue looking at all of these water sources that come up with, what are the options we can, or literally just put it in that and say, I can't do that.
So what area are you looking at for that?
Well, in essence, you want to probably get as close to the pump station as humanly possible.
Right.
So Two Rivers Park is potentially a location, because we've got a disgrounded path in there, along the Rio Ranch Trail, a Fourteenth Street Bridge area. Veltis, we have a trail right along there that we could tear up and put vertical, shallow vertical wells in. All those kind of things are being reviewed, I don't want to go too far with this, I mean, I don't want to spend three million dollars on infrastructure, you know, if we don't have to, kind of thing. At this point, we don't have to, that's why we're just reviewing it, and saying, what are our options that are actually out of there? You know, if we've done all this stuff in nineteen seventy seven, fun part about these things, and looking at the end, I think Grizzly Creek reservoir is like three hundred thousand. When they actually originally went out, it was prices for it, now it's, who knows, eighty million. You know, they're, they're not, it's not a cheap investment. You know, they're, they're not, it's not a cheap investment, so.
And where is the water in the area of the pump?
It's in that port. I don't, right off the top of my head, the Seventh Street.
How does the G F N R M L, if we go to development there, you know, that, that's a conversation.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
There we have about forty five nice, yeah, well, are, are we?
We wouldn't know why the rights at Seventh Street, would we?
We don't, currently.
Well, but you don't have to use the water for G F N R M L, you just pick up.
Yeah, I mean, I remember, we, we've looked at. We, we've looked at a couple of times, yeah, utilizing G F N R M L resources, attempts to facilitate a fight with the.
Right, yes.
And, um, up until these now, council has obviously chosen not to engage in that fight. So.
So kind of flip or do real quick, just all you left is, uh, a couple of passes, you know, I'm talking about the water model and Mike's talking about the water model. Um, so as you know, the, the plant is eight point six five M G D plant, I think we've had this conversation before, all the operations, you know, simple, you could recertify it's ten. And do you play that we watched you? No reason to do that at this moment, it's just a process to go through. Uh, so it is, we could process eight point six five M G D, as you can see, that plant in its existing condition, at some point was processing nine. That's what it said in the report, that was a major outburst. The plant is plenty big for what we need, uh, to push water, having the extra twenty four inch line in place will alleviate the, the June twenty twenty happening. When that one piece falls off of the water, the city has no, except for what's stored in tanks, hopefully that's at that moment. Um, and we'll be able to mix these things now. The limitation is the twenty four inch water line itself. You know, um, Corolla did spend this engineering on that and basically. We could push through eight point seven M G D through that line, if we get up there a little bit more depending on, it could be closer to nine, nine and a half gallons. So the plant and the, the line are fairly well balanced on what we can actually push to it. Um, and what the plant can actually process, so they did a really good job of designing this thing. So in twenty twenty, we got the population conversation, obviously, the population projections back in the day were way, way off. Uh, we didn't even get ten thousand people in the twenty twenty census, um.
Is that population based on before the gas, I mean, per each people, I mean.
You have to assume something to that effect, it's not mentally in there, but it may be this area was growing, then it bought it, basically.
Because I'm kind of in our later conversation.
If all are in eighty, eighty one, for example, about their objective.
Yeah, I would.
Eighty or ninety thousand in the county, you know, if there was more than twenty thousand or something, that's so.
I, I was really kind of leading a vacuum, we were gonna come down, plan and grow, that's what I just wanted to put that.
So we made this kind of brief assumption of saying that COVID probably knocked that down to five, like eleven thousand people here, ten thousand. You know, if you take the information from Lisa Langer, you kind of project how many people come here. You know, that's around four to five thousand potentially between two and a half people per room and, you know, um, short term rentals and those kinds of things.
That's very useful.
If everything was full, basically, we're kind of projecting to be almost five thousand people in town on top of the. So we'd be about sixteen thousand people, once again. We don't have the problems supplying water at this point, because we do hit high days, low days, as you can see, the high days, the day told people not to use it, four point seven million. Um, on average, I think we're ranging right around three, six, uh, three, two to three, six, kind of on an average day, so. Gets hotter, people turn the sprinklers up or whatever they're doing at that moment. Uh, um, so we're doing really well with water and in my opinion, yes. Um, but. All of the reports between nineteen eighty seven and the one Mike's about to talk about, we basically took them all and compressed them together and said, hey, we've. Piecemeal, trying to figure this city out, let's just figure it out. So we hired S G M to do a water model for the entire city, they'd already done five different locations, it may sense it was happening, filled it with the void. Um, we went out, we next we blocked fire hydrants for that, we've done, we took verify the model, this model saying this should flow here, yes it did, this should flow here, yes it did. Now, one of the disappointing things of the model was how much water can you push to Southlandwood originally? Through the twelve inch line, because we were always having a hard time filling that charred tank down there, which is why the south has been reviewed a bunch of times. I'm not saying it's true or what's gonna happen, but since they put the eighteen inch line there, it seems to very short on time be performing better than we expected. So Mike said, if you track the refill rates and the two tanks that are down there now, and hopefully we'll have some good news to bring back to you after we've had a month or two of interventances of saying. Maybe there was a partially closed valve on the twelve inch line that was buried, or something was interfering with flow into the twelve inch, because it was not performing as well, it should have. Now we completely replaced with a larger line, we know what our valves are, we know that they're open. It could have some really good, uh, results for us, um, and be able to fill those two tanks, we added the second tank so we could keep massive volume down there to draw us down. Um, because we, both tanks are offline at this point, one or second, we used to draw the one tank down to six feet, if we get ahead of it, build both tanks. Then they won't draw down there as much, the head will still be provided, it may have fire flow out there, because it's not a fire. But that being said, you want to talk about water model, why we didn't, kind of, do you want to go through?
Yeah, sure, so as Matt said, um, in two thousand and eighteen, we started looking at some of these smaller projects that were coming up in town, the Midland Corridor, as Matt said. And the Carter's Tank. Um, so coming into twenty one, we are seeing more and more developments coming through, more future projects coming up, so we decided to do just a complete system. Evaluation, just as we did with, uh, Midland Corridor and the tanks. Um, so to do that, we have to do more calibration, go out and take pressures, do fire flows. And see what's physically happening in the system and verify that on the computer system, that's how we calculate the system and know it's accurate. And the studies we're gonna do are going to in fact be an accurate study. Um, a couple of the things we were interested in in the twenty one study, um, was a demand analysis. Historically, we used three hundred and fifty gallons per day as our E Q R calculation for developments coming in, single family homes. Um, and we wanted to know if that was in fact an accurate, um, number to use. Um, what they came up with is we should actually lower that E Q R number to about two hundred and seventy four gallons per day. Yeah, the good news about that is it actually reflects with, um, towns and cities similar size to us, rightful, um, I think it was pointed this, uh. Um, so they made that recommendation, I don't think we've changed it yet, is everybody know what E Q R is? Single family home, thirty five hours per meter grass, four bedrooms, two baths, five, but what if a single family home uses in a day, three hundred and fifty gallons, use before eighty? A few years ago, we changed it to three fifty. And looking at the curve, because we sent them all of our water modeling, all our meter information, and they basically go up to about ninety percent on the curve and say. Everybody in nine, well, ninety percent is, I won't say the doctor's name, you can see that guy, they use us too much water. Everybody below that portion is most likely kind of falls into the single family home more than used. And that's how they calculate, they take the amount of meters we gave them, divide the flows out and say, you're more than two seventy four. So I make sure we what do you hear on me.
The efficiencies of all the, all the equipment and everything, but also the lines and just improvements over the years?
That's basically kind of the end game of it, yes.
Okay.
As people put more efficient fixtures in, people built more efficient apartments, the apartments are a little smaller, on average, the E Q R should be exist. So the less single family homes, single family home is a very large water user.
Right.
You know, when they turn your AC on like I do, which I don't want to do, my wife plants the grass, kind of, you know, that's where we're using a lot of water. If you have a two bedroom, two bath condo, it's equivalent to a single, small, single family home. They don't, they see like a lot, they don't have much grass area, which is not great for themselves, it can be a part of the conversation, but. You know, they're very efficient in water usage at that point versus a single family home, which is a little less efficient.
Right, right.
It's our, go.
So one of the other tasks we did was, um, identify deficiencies in the distribution system, and that means pipes. Um, pump stations, tanks, do we have new storage? Um, and then, yeah, so they identified a couple of deficiencies within the system, and we've pretty much known about these. And essentially that is the Glenwood Highlands area, which also feeds into Cedar Crest now. Um, they identified that the tank is too small and the pump station is too small, basically this pump station during. Um, peak season runs twenty four hours a day, in fact, it's running fire on twenty four hours a day, which is not good, so if there was fire to possibly break out there. It would be tough to keep up with the demands.
Um, Charlie asked for a map, so the map is up on the screen. So, okay, I'm sorry, it's still in my back, quite quick, this is, this is a tentative, this is, I had tanks, a hundred and forty thousand gallon tanks, it's above Mr. Sheriff's House. In a horrible location that we can't actually get to, I've been on foot, so that's fine. Um, booster tank, booster station number two that Mike's talking about sits here.
Nice, yeah.
Yep, so we have a tank and a booster station, and right at the end of this is Oxford or something. Yes, to go up there, um, that's the booster station that we've basically replaced, uh, with this conversation, so. Um, just to go through the map, I guess, canyon tanks are over here, that's the two, the twenty ounce water wind that comes out of.
This is the other.
Yes.
Right.
We have two tanks for the roller, examine, store all water, then push it through the system, just to have some volume associated with all of it, like. Um, voice the tanks, booster station, Highlands tank, uh, they become all the way from West Glenwood, you can see the West Glenwood tank up on the side of the hill. Uh, coming south, we got the Red Mountain, it's just below water plant at the top of Twelve Street, uh, there's two water tanks up there. And then south in the town, it's a part of tank, but now it's part of tanks. Uh, that are down there, we're at six and a half million gallons of storage, not including the water plant itself at this point, yes.
Um, so.
Both are in fixed operation.
Yes, yeah, they have it, so it's like total. Um, so that's where the, the kind of overview of the whole entire city, where the yellow little slots are where the water tanks is, yes, go.
Thank you, Matt. So. In, in, identified a couple of deficiencies, like I said, we know a couple of them, and what do we need to do to replace those? Upgrade booster station number two and add another tank somewhere between the Highlands area and the Cedar Crest area. Matt said the Highlands area is not conducive for doing construction up there. So we're looking at a second tank, uh, above Sunny Year, so roughly above the Golf Course area. And what that will do is help, um, when booster station number two is upgraded, to store more water for emergency use and that essential usage also.
What, what's it being, uh, upgraded, booster station number two?
So the booster station is undersized according to the water model and operationally knowing that in summer drain the key demands. Station running nonstop, can barely keep up with keeping.
This is beautiful, baby.
I'm sorry, it pumps water from one of our zones, which is the oldest subdivision over to the Highlands area.
Okay, so it fills that tank, provides additional pressure within that system, so in the summertime, it doesn't fill tank. We just kind of maintain the sort of what was at a moment, like correct now about, but we want to just be able to fill the tank. So they can turn it off for a while, we can use tank pressure and that water, then it will turn back on, it's a site, right now it's just running. Which is not good for a home.
Oh, great, be perfect, um.
There's a few different things that are within, this is your, yeah, basically, but a few recommendations within the report on how to do that. And we're gonna go off for an R F P, um, coming up here soon, uh, to actually get that design work going. So the plans for this, uh, you go.
No, it's okay. Um, but overall, I mean, we, we have a couple of other issues we know about, um, operationally, and that's water age in the West Glenwood zone. Takes a long time once the water leaves the plant to get all the way over to West Glenwood. Um, so we've already done some operational changes internally, which is free, doesn't cost us anything, which is basically cycling that tank. Further, which has helped the water age, and if we do a couple more smaller projects, um, will greatly increase the water quality in that zone. Not that the water quality is bad, we're still meeting all of our, um, goals and everything, we just want to improve it. Um, other than that, I mean, the model basically sets systems in really good shape. Uh, a couple of small projects here and there, and we'll be able to handle out basically any future build out scenario. We worked with, um, community development department to identify potential development sites, like up above the Meadows. The Confluence area, um, Donac Road, kind of identified all those sites, what they could be built out to. Provided that to S G M, and they plugged that into the model and gave us recommendations, but overall, we can handle future development for the foreseeable future.
So the really good, an interesting piece of the model is they ran it so that. What is our capacity right now, it's like water, how many E Q Rs do we have left in each zone? You know, so now we have an E Q R count of West Glenwood, I'm making up number, there's two thousand E Q Rs left in there. Okay, so if we built three hundred units over there, the equivalent's to two hundred E Q Rs, if you're not quite E Q R, can we handle that? You know, in the essence, it's giving us the ability to look at each area now so that we now have a tool to say. Okay, this developer wants to go in down here, we know through the water model that we can do that. And then with water, we add more developments, we'll update the water model, it's all done now, so it's pretty easy to actually do updates on. Uh, so we have that tool, you know, to handle and come down and say, hey, I want to add a thousand units over here, can we do that? What is the E Q R, unit's gonna be, what are the requirements for fire flow? We can actually look at that and say yes, no, and be able to give it to somebody and say, here's all the data we never want, yes, we can do that. That was one of the main goals of this project, was verify the system, find the efficiency, both of what we do about, but it's gonna verify and put some more data to it. And then be able to have a tool and say, people, we can do development over here. We don't want to push it to the top end, but this year, we can do development.
That's a great tool.
Very, very handy tool.
Yeah, all the sophistication, I'm gonna go, we got.
And it's not just, it's not just us saying that.
Yeah, right.
Here's a hundred and twenty pages you'd like to read off of it. It's good for us, we can verify fire flows, where we have deficiency, or, or if we had, okay, we had efficiencies, but if we had efficiency and fire flow, like. The fire, fire was gonna open this hydrant, we're gonna get eight hundred gallons a minute, they really want fifteen to twenty five hundred gallons a minute, are we there, what are the pressures? We can verify everything within the system now, that we spent the time.
So just to clarify, did the model take into account every, all the developments that are already approved in the system right now, as well as kind of like, you don't need it?
We have all four hundred and fifty, we had Meadows, we had three hundred and thirty, that's four eighty, we have rivers, we built fifty where we started at. We have a ten percent airport, what did the airport, if it wanted to be something, first we report, what would it be? We just threw that E Q R number and it's associated with it, so it could work in Southlandwood. We took everything we knew in twenty, early twenty twenty one and said, this is, let's move all of this forward. I mean, to be honest, we think most of that's higher than what we're looking at right now, because I think like rivers sound like seventeen or something, we were looking at fifty. So, yeah, we did the best projections we could at that moment, just like they did in nineteen eighty seven. Um, to kind of push that model forward and have a comfort level with the conversation that we were having and are still having.
So Matt, are some of these things just type of, are those all really, are your infrastructure logic this as a possibility?
Yes.
In three years ago.
Yeah, a lot of.
So we kind of know about that.
Yeah, we knew the pump station was a problem, we knew we had some valve initial go over, we knew we needed another water tank, we were gonna put it above Mr. Sheriff's House. Extremely cost, cost inefficient to do that, and he gave us easily to do it, so we have the right. If this other locations doesn't work out for us, those kinds of things, so a lot of these were coming our way, yeah. So.
The other big question again, I remember, we got cost factors, replacing the eighteen inch line, when it's seven down to eight.
Yeah, that's the future plans, whenever that quarter goes on, that is what the model identified, it has to go from Eighth Street. All the way down to Four Mile Road to make, everything is efficient as possible, I mean. Like Matt said, from twenty seventh to Four Mile, we're already seeing drastic improvements, just in that quarter or so.
So let me push that project out a little bit more. Or, you know, if we get the, from Twenty Seventh Street back to Eighty, Eighty, that may push that project, what, depending on what we see over summer, or recharge rates. And fill rates, that may push that project out a little bit more, because that's not just a water project, the conversation then is, do we want to expand sewer? Nobody along that stretch in a sanitary sewer other than O W T S. So do we want to push you that, doubles the price for project all of a sudden, and not the entire road out, so like laying.
They don't do a, a, a bit of rebuild like we're doing right now, for four times the distance.
It's four times the distance, but it's the, and then you're building sewer, really sewer and water, and basically you'd have to build water. Get it online, so you could build sewer for the excess water, probably, as if it's not that big of a platform, and it's, it's complex.
And where's this? Where's the sewer go? They all have lift stations or?
They all have onsite water treatment systems.
They do now, but would they need lift stations to get?
The ones below need a lift station, yes, which is not uncommon by, like mountains, and the ones above, obviously, perfect.
I was, that would be insane.
But it would eliminate that hazard. But it would eliminate that hazard, I will call it, along the river, because a lot of those are original nineteen eighties OWTS or ISDS, whatever they were called back then. Do they really need any regulations? Do they even know where they are? So we're gonna have a spaghetti.
Well, okay, John, you responded, you said, it's not quite the same as what we're doing at Southern, because you don't have to move up the platform.
Right.
Right, which is a significant cost.
But things that we are working on right now is credit go up in RFP for the pump station, and we're gonna go for a RFP for the water tank, we're going out for a RFP for a lift station, eleven thousand, Glenwood Meadows. We've all had that conversation, we know it's a capacity right now, with all the new things coming online, just to go up from there. A lot of these things we can do at house, some of the valving part that we need to do, we're gonna do everything we can at house. Um, and on top of that, continue with all the water line replacements that we're doing in town, Lake Avenue, Twenty First Street, I mean, just. It never stops, but, and the model's telling us right now that in verified, it's not just the model, we've verified third flows, the model is actually correct, that we're pretty dark.
Alright, okay, qu- quick question, um, I heard a whole bunch of numbers and a whole bunch of variations, brains basically empire, but I think I tried to follow as good as I could. Um, one thing I, I got out of this, as you said, we have about eleven thousand people, and about five thousand tourists, roughly, using four and a half million.
On average, in the.
On, on average, floating records.
In the summer.
In, in the summer, in the summer, right? So, a- and we're in good shape with that number. I, what population and tourist visitors are we not in good shape anymore? What's the number that says, oh my god, stop?
Yep.
No more.
And that's an interesting question, I don't have an answer to at this point, but we can work on, um, because, do we have more tourists that are random? Do we have more population? What does the population look like? Is it condos or is it single family homes? You know, you have to, that's a hard question to answer, depending on where the demographics really go.
And I'm, I'm just thinking that could play into a conversation later on.
That's why we're not like, encapsulation, what can you do?
Yeah, like, so, so, but how would that relate to that?
Right, and I think the, the very difficult thing, and, and I think, there again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold it to Tom, because he's been around a lot longer than me. Uh, is that, you know, a lot of planning world, what we thought forty years ago regarding environmental conditions. Has changed so dramatically, and frankly, has changed, and is changing so dramatically in the last five years. That, I think, as we, the hard piece to predict that where the population center is, or what's the number? Is, you know, are we going to look like Phoenix in twenty years, which the answer is probably yes. So, how do we, how do we account for that planning piece? And I think that's the harder one. Uh, because it is, you know, we're not looking out for storeable day anymore, we really can't, because it's not a great predictive model of what's gonna happen.
For this, sorry, to that point.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, this really informs our language goes going forward.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I, I was talking with my wife a couple weeks ago, and it's like, I don't recall the fifteen years I've lived here. Maybe more than one or two single family houses that have been built out of the dirt, now, a lot of that was recession. But there just doesn't seem to, and these are big gas, like gas, water slurs, is the single, my, so, actually, probably all of our houses, like. There just doesn't seem to be a lot of that potential ripping forward, and is that something where we, I'm sorry, I object, thank you. Is, is that something where we don't need to make decisions on landings because it's kind of already built out, or is that something we should intentionally say? That growth that is going to occur needs to be this type of growth?
I think that's a comfortable question.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, yeah, I would agree, and I think it's also, you know, we're looking at, um. Landscaper requirements and thoughts, and, you know, there's a, there's a lot of things that go into that, you know, we're really. Compared to where we work before, we start to fix and lease, we're a really pretty efficient community, if you look at those winter usage numbers, uh, which is fantastic. Uh, so that, you know, that gives us a lot of, if you think about the cushion that you have in there, uh, which is why some of the things that Matt has been. And like, been talking about in terms of expanding broad, or is it so nice to have, not have to have on the system, those kinds of things, you know, there's a lot of opportunities there. Uh, to cut down what, you know, what's our kind of critical component.
I would also say too, that this is not a situation, in my opinion, where one, one subject is the fix, meaning that we're not just gonna talk about. Housing and density of housing, say that that is going to be the one and done fix for how to resolve water concerns we need for. We do need to touch based on what basic requirements are, we do need to touch based on where, um, what we're charging for EQRs and make sure that it's economically viable for our community. There's so many facets to this, to this complex situation, and we can't just narrow in on, you know, kind of identify one, it's like, if we fix this, that'll do it for everything. Right.
Wait, just a follow-up, but, um, um, so we don't have a, a magic number that puts the needle under the rack, but we, we do know the EQRs in certain areas.
But I think that is the magic number.
I was gonna say, is that, is that where the needle is gonna move to an orange and say, we, we don't just stop?
Yes, we have decide where we're, the comfort model, but the conversation that Carl just brought up, we're still in Phoenix.
Yes.
After our water gonna drop in half, so we don't have twenty CFS, we don't have twelve million gallons, we have six, you know, those kinds of conversations are. But it'd be interesting to have and figure out, to be honest.
I think it's gonna be a major component of, of moving forward.
Can we cancel the gap, asking of those EQRs for each of the areas, so we can see it?
Send you, can be very interesting.
Yeah, I just want to, I was gonna say, just before I sent the report out, we'll give you a link to the report, and you can read it, and it just said West Glenwood East, so just say, this program is multiple areas, you can see what's left of it in each one. And you can see the development, they actually put the developments we had in there, it was a set, how big they were. And the reason that I'm only using twenty, I use twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one numbers for water use, you know, six canisters on, lofts is on, existing communities here. The schools that are still sprinkling their, their lawns kind of thing, so I'm, even past statute is, you're right. You know, we can look at the back and go, yeah, there's a lot of water, at least in the eighties, we used a lot of water, at least in the thirties, and so I've just kind of been using averages. And I've often just keep throwing different numbers out, but in winter of the last years, it's one point two three eight billion gallons per day. And in the summer, on average, it's three point two four nine billion gallons per day. The peak of four seven is one and a half billion gallons above what our average usage is over the last. So, that's, we have good amount of water still left, and we don't wanna dry creeks up, which is always the battle. Maybe some years we have to, you know, who knows?
Yeah.
As this Phoenix conversation starts to come to a light, to like. I haven't said anything, I can't.
I have a question on the, the, you have, one of the bullets in here, things that you're working on and planning is that working with Reynolds Gate ditch for more irrigation. Keeping it out of the treated water, so I like that a lot, I guess, I'm, I'm curious, it says that that's a reliable water supply from Mitchell Creek. During that whole conversation on the development of West Glenwood, I heard some different things from some of those ditching creek users that might not be as reliable, or either it's over allocated or. How that works, are you working with those stakeholders and are we pretty sure that there's reliability, if we wanna use that for irrigation or pots over months and later? You know, towards the fall, or how's that?
So they keep records on all of that, what flows were and how they have been over the years, so we can pull all that information up for them, so we have it together, the model basically to show the reliability of that source. Is it over allocated? It's potential, but we own all this, all those applications, so the water is physically there. There's more than even the golf course can potentially use, kind of conversation, so we need to look at that before we come up with. How many houses can we really feed off of what we would build, kind of conversations, being, look at the low year, then just say, hey, if it's a low year. All of this has to happen first, and this is how much water we would have left, and maybe model it after that number, so let's see how big we can make it.
Right.
You know. Whatever happens with four eighty and the mall, that's kind of a decent little place to put the pump station, to come off of there and start feeding it out.
Right.
Location wise, because it's right in Bill Dish, Dish is very close, um, those kinds of one things, so that's. If that comes in, it comes to fruition, then I'm love, we wanna meet with them, because that, they're already gonna put a booster station in. Because they promised to use that water for irrigation, maybe we could co-op with them a little bit, make it bigger, and start being able to provide that out. The funny thing is, every time, if a sprinkling restriction's on, we get, hey, the middle school is still watering, yeah, they're running off the ditch, the ditch is still running just fine. For the golf course function, and the school to keep their grass green, and everybody that's willing to use it, to continue to use that water, so. I don't have those numbers right out, I mean, I don't have seen the chart, it does drop occasionally, but it's a fairly reliable source.
That's good.
Okay.
Reynolds. We got one.
Yeah, we should put the flash and sign up button for a while, like, not using city water. They didn't, they had a sign up for a while, they didn't, they had, like, some students, it looked like students had made it on it, and it said, we're, we use irrigation money. Or ditch water upgrade. Yeah.
Tom, you wanna say? He's gonna counteract everything I just said.
Um. I think that, um, having more than one arrow in your quiver relative to having. The ability to pump the Ryanford River simultaneously with the, uh, no name is a critical path, and you're headed down that, it seems, I think that's a. We're doing that, a good thing, and you have to, I think there's a lot of accounting that you can probably do to stretch the five hundred acre feet. Way further, because it's a consumption use number that you've got, not a diversion, and you keep referring to it as a diversion, so I, you're right. Say you could.
Correct.
Drag that out a lot further, a lot than where you are. Uh, now, uh, I would caution you a little bit about, uh, the three fifty is just a historic. Number that, uh, is tied to a whole bunch of water rights and decrees and, and a lot of things, and to, uh. Change that number within the city, uh, is a total rewrite of so many different things. Uh, it's important for you to know that you actually use two seventy-four, you know, that, that to me, I think is more of a. Pale water, water rate or amount that shows up at the wastewater plant. Uh, at, at least, you know, if you look at Mid Valley and various other municipalities that we run. Uh, you know, that's pretty consistent, that, the.
If, if that conversation were to be much larger conversations, we'd never just change it, it would be a doing once.
Well, I, I just, it, I mean, this report, it's like.
Yeah.
Just, just changing that number just has a lot of.
Sure.
Spin effects.
Right.
Relative to, uh, all the numbers that are associated with all of these water right kinds of things that are. It, that, that would be very difficult to rearrange. Your EQRs to a different EQR.
Sure.
Uh, I saw that happen, and still, it, it was a mess.
You're right.
Kind of solved.
And we just had him run it just to see what it would come out to.
Yeah.
It's not.
There, there, there's, and, and that's fine, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing, oh.
All right, that's for clarification of that, so the EQR is tied to the water.
Well, so, so what it does, and it's, it's not as bad for Glenwood, because we only actually have, because of how senior our water rates are, are, we have. Uh, fairly limited on plan, which is really what the killer is, like, uh, for what happens still, because you gotta work through and try to recalculate what that means, depending on the language and the decrees. So, in most of our water rates decrees that we've done, uh, you know, as practitioners over the last fifteen, eighteen years. Three hundred and fifty gallons per day is, has been like the number of EQRs always tied to, and so. If your decree says you have this number of EQRs, that, that is typically tied to that number, so once you shift that number. Uh, if you're trying to shift it in those decrees, that's changed all the calculations that, that those were based on, underlying engineering reports, all of those kinds of things, kind of what gets. You have to read through all the data, which is extraordinarily difficult. Uh, so, in terms of looking at, for us internally, looking at how, how much, how far does that water actually go, recognizing, and I think it goes to what Jonathan's saying, is that we are seeing a drop in. Single family residences and an increase in multifamily, which is a much lower water, and so that number is indicative of kind of where are we at. Uh, on, on a, kind of, like, in a basis, on, on, on that population basis. So, they, they kind of serve two different walls, if you will, uh, you know, how, and how they're used, so.
But it's more than just a plant.
In, in the water model, when they do these EQRs and the calculations and everything, we're using three fifty. This is just a piece of information that, hey, the demographics, the, the uses are changing a little bit, and three fifty is basically, we would definitely not take. Many, many times, before that would happen, it's just a piece of data for us to show that our usage has changed, we're going up instead of big houses. Now, and keep in mind that our water regulations too, have the, the ability, like, restaurant use are a great example, where there have been significant strides made here, reducing the amount of water that shoots in a restaurant. Uh, and, and so, we're under probably the last fifteen years, I think we've seen more of this, there's a, a provision on a code, where you can go back to audit what your, your last year's usage was. And, and modify how big system improvement fees were that you had to pay. Uh, you know, because we start out at, that's, you know, at zero, at, at those calculations, which are built off of three fifty. But we also recognize, when you have a specific use, sometimes they're just super efficient, and if that is appropriate, then we go back and modify, you know.
Oh, nice, okay, I, I also wanna add in that there are some economic variables that fluctuate, and while I completely appreciate that the. The data is now saying that maybe in our area, we're seeing lower, your usage historically, keeping it where we have it. Even where our water rates are, I think are valuable, because it's, it's so proactively saying that economically we can change, just like during. The recession and just like COVID, kids moved back and their parents, their usage moved up. Um, the majority of condos in our area were built probably from seventy-eight to eighty-two. Subdivisions that come in, and we do have more single families that are built during little cycles, so if we start making changes right now, just because of where we are right now, what we're seeing. Because of opportunity zones, at a tax level, things like that, I think that it's too reactionary, we need to instead kind of stay the course. Really secure and, and really protect those water rights and, and, and go that, that direction.
Which is why we didn't use the new numbers to do any modeling that we did, it's just a projection that we could, wanted to have a conversation, and we were to have a conversation, this is where we kind of end up at. Most likely, as the snapshot.
But eleven thousand, what do you think, um. Do you look, like, when we say eleven thousand, are true, it's a total area that we serve, you know, I hope not everybody serves them. Have people west one of the networks. When what, the numbers, is there, uh, something we should consider, say, like, four mile area, like, if they develop version one H, would we be supplying water there? And do we, we concerned about these numbers, and trying to get a sense of that in the future, that we should be looking at on who we serve.
So the reason I kind of picked eleven thousand is to, nobody put down the population. You know, we do serve a larger area than city boundary, which is where the population base, based off of, so we just kind of projected off of it, saying, hey. Existing right now, there's most likely, you're closer to eleven thousand people in this area, can I back that up in any way with a number and showing you that? No, no, I'd rather be conservative than go with what the census says, that's, no way that's possible.
Right, right, that's.
It might, oh, that, and, and, you know, so we're just trying to be conservative. Yeah, I think Paul is right, I think we're talking about to be projected out into the future based on, um, large scale annexation, settlement form.
Right, that's what I'm.
And I think that was kind of more of a, you know, a little bit, not totally, and one of the things to keep in mind, but. Uh, more than likely, large scale annexation, uh, similar to, uh, actually what's being offered, that's up for election. I, I see this, highly likely we bring anything in where we're supplying irrigation water to those large scale annexations. I just don't see a scenario where that makes any sense for our system. Uh, and that's, and that's frankly, the biggest component of water usage, right? Uh, so I think that makes it easier to plan for those, uh, from my perspective, at least. And that's kind of why I was finding it very important, this conversation about population, I don't care what the population is, how many EQRs, you can see in South Glenwood, we have this many EQRs left, that we can push there. You know, does that change a little bit? If we complete the holy cross, well, it's like, I mean, if there is a change a little bit, if we can get the ETS line all the way back to eighty-eight, you know, a little bit. But we still have a maximum plant capacity associated with being able. You know, a little bit, but we still have a maximum plant capacity associated with being able to feed water up to the city too. So that's why I'm looking at E Q Rs. How much water do I have to give to those people in that particular location? So. But yes, all those fun, what happens with earth is, you know, it is a discussion. It is things that we're always thinking about and so is Tom and so is everybody else. You know, and we'll have to make those decisions based off of this good data that we have. We're gonna, they have to stand alone. Maybe that we can be supplied possibly, but maybe just domestic and not education, you know, those kinds of things. So.
Carl, excuse me, um can we require those developers if they provide the infrastructure needed for?
Yeah, I mean, I.
That's not a method.
Yeah, no, absolutely. So I mean, typically underneath any, okay, so two different two different answers. One is inside corporate managers currently. Uh if there's a need to uh, you know, upgrade or update uh or extend utilities, that is always on the developer noise and and. You know, sort of, you know, was asked to uh when we're annexing something, uh we have, you know, uh always taken a hard look at. You know, what do what do they bring to the table in terms of water rates in particular? And in fact, our our charter speaks to that particular issue uh as being an important component of our consideration. So we always do it there again, even if it's an extra, you know, if it is an annexation area, all you have to start with is there. That's on them. If it triggers something like, hey, we need another, you know, two hundred thousand gallon tank here at this location, then that that becomes part of that conversation. Uh yeah, that's uh the Carter tanks are a great example of of kind of some of that occurring where. You know, one of I believe one of those two tanks. Came in as part of the cart one, part east development, right? Uh I'm getting a hold of my camera.
I don't remember which one he.
Yeah, that's all in my camp. But one of those two developments happened to turn around. They were. In a whole and hard paid for that tank. So we always, we're always looking for that, right? And we always look like we did. In fact, we last year when we replaced, let's say, sixteen thousand, is something we need to do already. Is it beneficial? Cost share a little bit, you know, we try to make this fair, it's really positive because that situation, who be benefit of that?
Right.
At the end of the day, we know there's a lot of development potentially could end up there. We were going to replace it because of the whole station anyway. So. That's maybe the pay for certain things. We pay for some things at the same time, the benefits here.
And part of this conversation, but not really part of this conversation is irrigation water. Like they're not having to. Use the instructor to to process it. We're not getting potable water on the bus. I personally would love to see it encourage more of that type of. Usage.
Sure.
I think it's such a great, I think, of working, you know, when we see these films come in, if we have any at all possibility, I think there are two hundred percent of us with. With that, where that's, I think, where we need to be setting our goals.
And six and six canons did that when they came in and lost and had to because we already have a raw water system out there. So those are definitely things to be taking consideration when these get brought in. What can you use to take on, not the burn yourself?
Well, you know, right now we're still at like a hundred percent.
We're doing okay.
We're doing okay. This year, but you know, this is not the year, I mean, three, four years ago, but the next best times this year.
Yeah.
I think that uh, you know, when we look at, and we talked about it a lot, like highly progressive water rates, uh smart metering. Uh even lawn buyback, that makes a state bill right now that I don't know Carly policies, some of this stuff, it's it's gotten. Through committee or not, but it's at the base of a dollar a square foot to buy back lawn and there's a require, I mean, inversions are unlooked required to match. I I don't know about necessarily for like this year throwing things on because I think we are in a good spot right now, but I don't want to be having this conversation March. From a year from now, where it's seventy percent of our snowpack would be very reactionary because things like. A large scale smart metering program where um you would have like maybe even emergency rate. We say, you know, we're on water restrictions that. You're using above a certain amount, like you just get big in a big way, you know, there's a lot. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of carrots other than like buyback programs. It's a lot of sticks at these things, but. I I really would encourage council to start to have a serious conversation about this over the next. Four to six months and and maybe break some recommendations forward for next summer.
And and I guess that's where I'm trying to lean to and what they. Really help from the shape. When I saw the map, it's easy.
Sure.
That. My concern is is that's why I bought the Chris and Chris work right beginning this. Right now with Frank, just, you know, we got enough water and all that, but we need to be thinking about this type of test, the challenge, just then. Do we want to start talking about this probably part of the the comp plan process, you know, getting ready, you know, and and going to zero or more zero escape and everyone. But even more importantly, we even though it's ten years before you build the rest part, we start talking about, is there a need with continuing decrease in. Snowfall and things like that, what kind of planning do we need? The water storage in our footprint systems, which is great. And I think we need to talk to them. I don't think we can just ignore. Given that in here all the time, so.
And and we are going to talk about it. We have salt in the board. It's already working through called the desktop study associated with it. You know, will it go anywhere? We'll know in two to three months. We'll sit down with Forest Service and have a conversation with them. They may come up with fatal flaws that will kill it next month with the other ones. Hay staff or something, the president has to approve that. I might not be able to go that high uh to kind of get that accomplished. So. Um you know, and that's why we're doing.
I fully understand the the other end, not the other impacts of building reservoirs. I fully understand there's going to be a lot of resistance for any number of reasons. But we get down to who get built by water for a community or citizens, well, I drive a lot, but are you gonna be able to do that or not? I think we need to talk about that now. And not ten years from now because it's a dead relief. And that's why I asked you about the are we metering that we know? I was curious to see if the flows coming in through that that old meter at that that location shown us, are they going down the last several years? So that's valuable information. So. My view was twenty nine months a year is probably not a bad expenditure to to have start again, yeah.
And we'll look closer to June or July, whether that's worth putting back up or not through these conversations and reports that we're doing now. So Mike and I have already talked about it. I think we both agree that if it's. If this is even slightly viable, we'll pay the money and we'll we'll have to put back up, we'll run it for four or five years, whatever. Because like I said, this. Easily the ten year process, if that's the direction we end up going.
And I think.
That's a big.
I guess my initial message, and I understand what you're saying, is if I were not now, then they change if there's no water. You know, if we ensure that we can store water and then supply the whole dynamic and the resistance, all those things that we see in the world today, we not be there.
You're you're coming down to a needs report, which we will fill off.
Yeah.
And those things will be within.
They take more.
Hey, we've seen Bella drop the rainfall attempts. It's twenty five percent over the last several years. Hey, these all have effects on what we're really. So that needs the the needs report to be kind of what you're talking about.
That's that's what I'm saying. That's why I think, you know, again, you let us know it's about night, but I'm not gonna micromanage your job. But just knowing data. You know, I'm making decisions to get the side moment, you know, trying to get fifty or sixty or eighty million dollars reservoir, knowing that the water flow has been dropping by.
Sure.
X number of C F S every year because of why it's snowfall. If that trend is going downward, there's a big, since we have a big impact.
We'll say it this way, by the time the snow melts and we put it off, we'll know we should put it up.
And we're looking.
The scene is like, yeah, I'm not going up there before you.
We're looking, I think, at everything we can do to be more resilient, not just in water, but in electric and everything we're doing. So.
I also think that the the concept of skinny ag app, which is really what we're doing, there's many ways to do it. And the reality is in this situation, you know, the the. The path of least resistance, um education and existing services and increased functionality, that's really where we need to be spending our most time and energy. Um when we're looking at something that we're already saying, we might have to get a president's approval for something, I think that needs to be entertained, just like you said. But our our best approach is these, the low hanging fruit, like, yeah.
Today, yes.
Yeah.
We're gonna still be out here.
I agree, right.
That's my concern. I don't want to be out here and and suddenly we're here and we're not, can't get them, we got to speed it further out.
You're saying foresight and being, you know, proactive versus reactive. And I appreciate that. And I think it's it it's just almost like. The diversified work philosophy of sustainability.
But what you're talking about, increasing, putting in a game also, that's that's here and, you know, water conservation, you know, you're zero state mode, things that we have to look at now. Those are. Well, some of those are.
Yeah, I think the end date are actually to to community development, to look at commercial um landscaping requirements. Those, that's the dialogue we should be having right now.
I know we're down to three minutes, but something that I haven't talked late about, but we're probably going to implement maybe twenty three three is like we do for electric, just a small sustainability chunk. People replace their five gallon flush toilets, we'll give you some money from that, you know, do I want to buy back? We'll have a chunk if that's being comes through, we'll be buying backs and landscaping, those kinds of things. I think that. Electric does it and there's a good reason. That's why electric has done this for basically since two thousand and nine, you know, we need to do the same thing with water, which we have actually very well. All these giant, these projects have come in, but water has changed hugely over the last three to five years, which is amazing to me. But it showed that we're using efficient appliances and those kinds of fun things. And they all say nowadays dishwasher uses less water than you washing dishes. But it's true or not, I don't know at this point. But I think if you have a sustainability program built into that, hey, you want to buy a new rainburger so that I can add the rain sensor to it. Fine, we'll give you fifty bucks to do that. You know, we'll pay for most of our things. But so I think there's a sustainability portion of this. We need to be. Taking some of that money and helping people, people don't have the funds to do that, um be able to be sustainable themselves.
Matt, in my opinion, we, my first work department uh changed to most people as well. Is that where I'm reaching the end, where we start moving at, pulling out or changing as we.
I don't want to talk to Dan.
I know that they were looking at kind of over mixing on bluegrass with some like native grass.
Right.
Um they are making other changes related to like um switching, which is not water, but switching out um to like electric. Um like leaf blow or something. So they're they're definitely taking a look at all of those layers that are in service to kind of like climate action goals, but. Uh you know, I don't know that they're necessarily going to zero escape, but I think they are looking at kind of at water wise.
The biggest thing that they are doing that we know that will be the biggest effect is automating all of the sprinkling systems. That would be amazing. So they actually know when they're running, they can control the time form, they can turn them off if it's raining and not have to go do that. You know, they can automate those entire, because that's a big user. That's the people we start turning off when there's maybe water back is the arts and sports.
Yeah, I know it's now it's still just doing a like a, they're doing something in the city part to inspire people to, I'm sure, just wondering, again, it's another thing to throw on the.
I'm curious all about talking about zero escape versus just native landscape.
Sure.
Right, I was just. That idea of us inspiring our citizens.
I know a lot of time, I was, I mean, there's a lot of things we have to talk about. I I was just gonna say the, I think she. Uh I was on a council call where they were talking about power associations, ski house, where they were talking about this other mountain towns. They said, why are we watering? Age type of grass, native or not, on areas people don't walk. And I'm thinking about kind of those areas around like Firefighter Memorial or. Uh at at Soaker's Elementary, there's that retention area. That's all Kentucky bluegrass and and no kid ever walks on that. Well, maybe they walk ruined, I think I should walk through that. Uh or like in front, like pipe full, like there's so much lawn in and around, like even our our park, people never walk on and it's just.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And I think there's so much we can do with that. And I think we should look at that before we start looking at over mixing and smart, or like. Do people actually walk here? Would anybody put a blanket here to enjoy it? If not, maybe it's wood chips. I think, you know, the other thing uh. That we we don't, you know, said, I I I'm not working, I said this, but like we don't have a water problem. We have a lawn problem. And if one point three million gallons in the winter, like can we make that? I mean, we always want some water for our parks and in our public spaces, but can we lower that? Can we look back at ten years, like you look back in the eighties with all the water leak, we're like, wow, nineteen, that's crazy. I love that actually between the eighties and mid nineties to bring it down from a peak of nine to four point seven. I I I would hope that we could make sense, I'm not climate goals, but water goals to say, our peak was average three point five. You know, can we bring that down to two point five with just um progressive water rates, not planting stuff, lawn buyback? And I hope in ten years, you're like, oh man, we were four point seven million gallons in in one day in in twenty twenty one, that that's crazy. Who would have ever thought that? They like, what are those goals? We want to work backwards. And I think there's a lot of conversation about this, but I'd love to have that conversation the next six months about some of those. I mean, truly, long term, absolutely. Let's keep those things going. Medium turns tanks, large infrastructure, right? They can hear. You know, let's let's start off.
And we're we're on to it. Yeah, I would agree. Like, if I had a list that we are looking at and and that is part of the list of the conversation, the complex is a part of that list. We will be con part of that conversation. How to reduce park areas needs to be part of that conversation. How to reduce water areas needs to be part of that conversation. How to reduce that one point two three eight million wait time needs to be part of that conversation. You know, who, where is that being used? A lot of it's hotels still, you know, those kinds of fun things. We could tell you because we do have a regarded smart meter system at this point. Where a lot of those were going in the visual and then start hitting those up, saying, you guys use more water than we would anticipate you using. Why? Let's go look at that. What can we do to help you? What can you do to help yourself to reduce that water? So water usage is going to be a conversation spanning everything. You know, we're looking at the global part of the conversation at this point, but I will say that global part is it's about this bit. And the whole conversation is this bit. So we need to look at all of that. And comp plan has to be a really important part of that conversation.
So keeping in mind that the tourism tax, that we have seven point five percent of that tax um now in our discretion to use for to offset impact tourism. So when you touch on hotel, using a significant amount of our water resources to me is an impact for tourism. So we want to use some of those to. The local hotels to boost education, to guests, to maybe reduce some of that water, you know, and like.
Or incentivize.
Exams.
Sustainability.
Yeah, like that to me qualifies for that that discretion response. So.
I'm sure. Keep in mind, we're making hotels, we're writing the process of doing all the real rooming models. And I haven't asked that specific question, but my guest is. Chris is pretty bright. He's he's producing water flow units in that. So all these charts are they probably be produced at less process.
He knows how much his bill is and what their cost effectively means, changing for efficiencies and what the buyback carrier or payback.
That's great.
So he's a very smart gentleman, I guarantee.
Well, he.
I was yeah, sending that yet, since we got to bring it back for council decision on the.
I'm just.
Oh, we can always.
Can I ask something real quick? Chairman of the commission here, I think, I love the education speaker. I definitely think we're a platform to use as we start to educate. We actually are planning to have a webinar here in the next few months about. Native plantings here and escape, educating our people. Because I think we need to look at the point on the heartstrings. Is that as we start to use more water, we start to have water issues, we're going to see the problem out here in our rivers and our creeks and our systems that provide the regulation and the economic boost to this city. So. Feel free to use this as me. We have some webinars planned, the love the education, talk water education. The state is also going through a huge platform right now because we realize. This is going to take a while. We need to have foresight. There's also some stuff we can do right now. It'd be like, hey, we don't need grass anymore. Let's go out, we know.
Yeah, let's go.
This is fantastic.
Yeah.
That's great, sir. I agree. Stop moving off, sir.
And we're gonna do this with electric in a month. So I did also bring back meter, some conversation about different water, you know, building offsets. We're not there financially or system wise, yet a few other things. And I've got my bearings at this point. So we haven't achieved shell that, it just hasn't been forward yet. Uh but we will get there and we'll bring water for the building back at some point. But electric will come up next, but that is just a bigger conversation. This is a mere fifty five year model also. For that uh this year. So we're trying to get a grasp, good grasp on how the city functions overall with everything. Uh we'll keep bringing those things to you guys. People either here or utility buildings, the next year. Thank you.
I just was talking. So I think I know.
I think. My process. So I always. I heard that I just, I was really. I was here. I think the island. That's right. Yeah, that's all. Here's all. Okay, okay. That's where, I mean, I was. I don't know why we didn't.
Maybe that door, yes?
But then like a guy take him out, we say I'm truly. Well, you know, smell water. It's good, I mean, it's not. I, but with that, which. You know, you work exactly when you start your target, you start coordinating, it's like, yeah, I love it, there.
I was going to say, was for water or you wanted?
Not sure. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, go ahead. Come back to. It doesn't. There's a lot of things I don't know. That's why I always wonder what Tom was going to say, that man has warm water knowledge. Yeah.